Welcome, everybody. I would like for everybody to please stand for the pledge.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the district's mission is to foster a positive nurturing and safe environment to inspire and support ongoing learning and the development of individuals as productive members of society. We must be able to conduct our meetings in an orderly fashion. Our expectations at all board meeting is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. In the event that anyone is disruptive and interferes with the meeting, they will be asked to leave. If they do not leave, we will request that law enforcement assist them in the process. It is illegal to interfere with a public meeting, by the way. It's against the law. Not that I'm expecting that this evening, but... Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Amsler.
Here.
Mr. Daffler.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Neese.
Here.
Mr. Toadvine.
Here.
Dr. Blessing.
President.
Mr. Espy. And I'm present.
Okay. We'd like to appoint a pleasure pro temp, and that would be Mr. Steve Holman. Can I have a... Well, let's move on. Let's go ahead and move on here. Okay, adoption of the agenda for January 19th, 2023.
I move that we adopt agenda dated January 19th, 2023.
Okay.
My second hit.
Okay. We have approval of the minutes for January 19th, 2023? I move for the approval of the minutes. Approval of financial report for December 31st. Motion, please.
I'll move for the approval of the financial report, December 31st, 2022.
Second. Could I have a... Is there a discussion for this one? This is kind of...
Yes, there is.
Yes.
Yes. So first, we'll be recognizing our district student of the month, Ms. Maggie Sanders. So Maggie, you want to come on down here to the front? Because I think someone's going to read some information.
Hi, Maggie. How are you? Good.
Miamisburg November student, district student of the month is Ms. Maggie Sanders. Maggie was nominated by Kinder Elementary School teacher Diane Lealos. Ms. Lealos said, "We are nominating Maggie Sanders for district student of the month. Maggie is a student that displays all the care traits: citizenship, acceptance, respect, excellence. If you were to walk into my second grade classroom, you would see Maggie at her desk concentrating on her studies. She goes above and beyond in everything she does at school. She always strives for excellence. If she has completed a task, she will always find something productive to do, reading or writing. Maggie has compassion towards her classmates and is always accepting of them. Anyone she will help in the classroom in need or assist the teacher. Not only is Maggie an outstanding student at school, she is involved in many community activities outside of school. She is a member of the Girl Scouts Troop 3011. She is working with her troop with so-called Hannah's Treasures that helps enrich the lives of children in need. Mrs. Pelfrey, a staff member at Kinder Elementary School, shared that Maggie is part of the Greenhouse Church and loves to learn and serve. Maggie has been taking gymnastics for a few years. This past year, she was on the competition gymnastics team. Maggie's determination and organizational skills make her a valuable member of our community. At home, Maggie's mother has stated that she is a girl that loves to learn. She is very diligent about working on her homework. She enjoys the love for reading. She is never asked to do her chores around the house because she will do them without being asked." Well, that's a rarity, Ms. Maggie, I can tell you that. She is actively nice to her brothers always and seeks to do right by them as well. It is an honor to nominate this outstanding student, district student of the month for this month, November 20... Or not November. Yeah, it is November. Yeah. Yeah. We're just catching up. Ms. Maggie, congratulations.
So Maggie, you can reach your brother with you this evening. And what are your brothers' names? Are they younger than you or younger? Okay, I may ask too. So what's your favorite Girl Scout nickname? Is that okay? Everybody's name is a little bit... You want to ask her if they wouldn't come up? And you can get a picture with them too? And your teacher too? Is there anything you can put in this picture on our website? You got Mrs. Huber, who'd like to take a picture too?
I'll take a picture, okay?
They want a real picture.
Thank you for sharing that.
Congratulations.
Maggie, congratulations from all of us. Maggie goes to my church.
Thank you.
Next, we go on to Mark Twain Elementary School STEM Lab presentation with Mrs. Kelly Lee Marker in KFI.
Well, good evening. I have the absolute pleasure of sharing with you one of our staff members who travels between several buildings. She is going to be sharing about our Mark Twain STEM class, but she also services several other elementaries in the district, including Medlarview and Bear. She is a 22-23 STEM fellowship or taking part in the STEM fellowship with Dayton Regional STEM. She has written and secured, this is amazing, over 20 grants. I see a future on the horizon for a grant writer here, no doubt. She's developing and implementing a K-5 STEM program and curriculum. She has also been of huge support to us during the COVID years, as she really worked hard through to support our staff and students with technology and remote learning. In addition, she just recently hosted a session with a partnership that she has formed with the United States Air Force, having a virtual presentation for our fifth graders with one of the lieutenant colonels there from the base. She has currently written and received four grants over the past two years, and that has provided a number of STEM materials to us, including Class RV Reality, SNAP circuits, Kiva planks, and a variety of hand-built materials. She also represents us at the Ohio Department of Education. She is only one of 30 educators from across the state selected to work with them as a teacher-leader liaison. So very exciting, and I'm pleased to introduce Mrs. Fikes.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee Marker, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and kind of share our Mark Twain STEM class and what we're doing over at Mark Twain Elementary. This year was the first year that we started a STEM program. It's one of our specials. I see students 40 minutes once a week, so I see K-5 students. It's been a real exciting transition for our students. The excitement level is, you know, really there, the engagement. STEM offers a lot of neat opportunities. We've had a technology program in the district for the past 14 years, and so this allows us to expand upon what we were doing. And... Is in... Are the pictures not... I don't know if it'll run or not. Yeah, yeah, because of... So up on the screen, you can see kind of what our STEM lab looks like, and then I have a variety of pictures of kids engaged in a variety of different activities. In our STEM lab, we do STEM challenges where the students get the opportunity to work together and solve real-world problems. And we do STEM stations, which gives them the experience with a lot of different things, a lot of different opportunities for growth. One of the great things about STEM is it promotes critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity. Mrs. Lee Marker mentioned the partnership with United States Space Force, and that was something that we... I applied for a partnership with them. There was an opportunity that was presented through the STEM fellowship with the Montgomery County ESC, and we were partnered with a lieutenant colonel who is based out of Virginia, and he did a live presentation with our fifth graders last week. And that was a really neat and unique opportunity for them. We had a virtual meeting. It was scheduled for about 40 minutes. We went probably an hour and 15, and the kids would have kept going longer, but I wanted to be respectful of his time. They had lots of great questions, and it was really neat for him to engage with them. He had a presentation ready to go, and once the questions started, the questions kind of took over the session, and he was really responsive to that. He told the kids, he said, "I'd much rather answer your questions than just present material that I've, you know, have." But the material he had, he was able to kind of tie in when they would ask questions. He had slides with pictures and infographics. So it was a neat experience and something that then he has offered to continue that partnership with our school in the future. It was kind of, it was a one-time thing, so I was excited and hoping that he might, you know, offer that. So that was a neat opportunity. And so we're really, we're constantly seeking new opportunities for our students, new experiences for them, and a variety of grants have... A variety of grants have, has, you know, provided a lot of opportunities. And so that's something that I'm constantly seeking, just to be able to bring new experiences to our kids. Do you have questions for me?
I highly encourage you to stop by. Her room is fantastic. I love going in and visiting and seeing all the great hands-on materials and just the way we were able to get some new equipment this past year, correct?
Yes, the furniture, everything in there is brand-new, and that was fantastic and very much appreciated. It really... If you had seen my room before, it was a traditional computer lab that was filled with rows, you know, of computers and blue chairs, and it was tight to get around. And this flexible space really works while the kids bring their Chromebooks, and we were able to incorporate 10 stationary desktop units in the lab as well. And so students are able to use the room in a variety of ways. Staff is as well.
Well, as a graduate of Mark Twain School, I won't tell you how many years ago it was, but it was a long time ago. I really wished there'd have been a STEM class when I was there.
It is a fun class. The kids really enjoy it. It's really neat because we really have the flexibility to do a lot of things in response to kind of what's going on in their lives and in the world around them.
Yeah, they learn a lot. Thank you.
Just a little video. The presentation is late in the agenda for this evening, so if anybody would like to go to the background.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was good.
Well, January is School Board Recognition Month, so all students of the Miamisburg City School District benefit every day from the dedication and commitment to quality education by our school board members. The hours and energy devoted to making this district a great place to learn do not go unnoticed. In sincere appreciation for exemplary leadership and service to public schools, these certificates are presented to, and they have those at their spot, Chris Amsler, Cory Daffler, Tim Lewis, Anne Neese, and Dale Toadvine. So we appreciate your dedication and service to our district, so let's give it a round.
Thank you.
And also, we would like to present the gavel to our outgoing president, Mr. Chris Amsler, for his service during the 22 calendar year.
Thank you. That's very nice. And Chris, probably, I'll thank you now, no, thank you at the end for a job well done this past year.
Well, my thanks, I mean, I might have been in the position as president, but everything was run by the lady next to me. Without her, she did 90% of the work on a daily basis and went to meetings that I couldn't attend, and so more of the recognition goes to Ms. Neese than it does to me. So her dedication is unwavering, and I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done for me for the calendar year.
That's nice of you to say, but, you know, I feel like you just always have supported me since day one. I appreciate you, and I enjoyed working with you last year.
Well, thanks. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I enjoyed all our late-night phone calls.
We had a few, yes.
Yeah.
Yep, well, part of the ballgame, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next, it's recognition of National School Board Counseling Week. National School Board, not counseling. School Board, just now, National School Counseling Week. Forget the school board part, okay? It's recommended that the Board recognize National School Counseling Week. School counseling, helping students dream big, will be celebrated from February 6th through the 10th of 2023 to focus public attention on unique contributions of professional school counselors with U.S. school systems. The Board of Education further recognizes that comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the Miamisburg City School's educational process. Having been a teacher myself, I can tell you that watching school counselors work, they're there early in the morning and they're there late at night. And personally, I can tell you that I had three kids, and I know they needed counseling at times. So I really personally appreciated what they did all those many years ago for my kids, and nowadays it's probably even more difficult to be in that position. So with the COVID and everything that's been going on, it's been a different world for our students and our counselors. Next, we have a resolution of appreciation for our retirees. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the resolutions of appreciations for the following employees. Mrs. Janet Crawford, 22 years of service to the school system, and Karen Leary, 19 years of service to the school system. Neither one of them are present this evening to receive their certificates of appreciation, but they will receive them. Dr. Blessing will make sure that they get them. And next, we have a board discussion concerning the elementary school programming and possible redistricting options.
Thank you. We have eight town board meetings scheduled where we are planning to go on the road within our district and discuss with all of our elementary schools and with our primary school, Maddox Lang, just some of the challenges we're experiencing with elementary programming and share some ideas that our district has worked on, not only with board discussions, elementary administrators, teachers, staff. And so we're going to share a little bit with you in case somebody can't attend one of those board meetings, I mean, not board meetings, town hall meetings, and so they could watch this. And so I'll give a shorter version than I do during the town hall presentations. So as I mentioned, you know, why are we doing this? We do have some challenges that we've experienced in the last couple of years, and, I mean, they're exciting. Growth is exciting, but change and growth can be a little bit of a growing pain as well. So some of the challenges of why we're having these discussions and considerations in the last couple of years during, after COVID, or during COVID, we identified that possibly some of our earliest learners have had some achievement gaps and gaps in their development. So with some of our Esther dollars, we decided to pilot an all-day kindergarten program. So that started two school years ago, and we had one program in every building. And then last year, we actually had more interest from our families, so now we have nine full-day programs, but we only have seven elementary schools. So how do you pick which buildings those programs go in? And then we had less students want half-day programs, so not all of our buildings offer half-day. So trying to find a solution where they could all be in maybe a central location to help with class sizes and just collaboration and better programming. So we're looking at how we can better serve our kindergarten population moving forward. Exciting. Also, we have had a preschool expansion. We've had our partnership with the Miami Valley CDC since 2017, and they house their preschool program at Medlarview, but then we also have our district preschool program at Maddox Lang. And again, how can we accommodate any growth that Maddox could incur? And if their building exceeded that, could we have a close proximity to have some collaboration, have our preschool on at least the same campus if we couldn't have it in the same building? So we're looking at those options. We have some growth going on in our district, and growth is good, but when you have seven elementary schools and we can't equalize their enrollments, then sometimes we start to see disparities within our enrollment. So we have seven elementaries. We have one elementary that has 390 students and another that has 174, and then they range in between. Mrs. Oppson, if you want to kind of see there on the slide, so how do we try to equalize and offer the same opportunities and try to also provide the best possible learning environment? So as you look at the span, excuse me, of buildings and sizes, you know, some of our schools have one section of a grade level, some have two, and some have three. But again, it's not consistent across the board, so sometimes when trying to make sure that we don't have too large of class sizes, if they're not all in that geographic residential boundary, it does make it difficult to equalize that and provide the highest quality of education possible. Some other items is the new development piece, and as you can see on the slide, we have four area, four of our attendance areas that are experiencing some growth. So Medlarview currently has one project underway, almost complete, and another project pending. And if you look at those numbers, 127 and 186, that's over 300 new residential homes to that one enrollment area. So that, depending on how quickly those homes go in, that could make a very large impact to one of our seven attendance areas. Aberdeen is almost complete, and there's around 37 students. I think, Mrs. Woods, you have 21 new students this year just from Aberdeen development alone? And they haven't completed that project, but it's close if you've been near there. Bauer is anticipating a rather large project that has three components in a area called Chamberlain Farms. They have apartments going in. I believe they're two-bedroom apartments that I'm aware of. It might be a little bit different. That has 141 units, and then we have two developments that could possibly have 206 new homes, all within one of our enrollment areas. And mind you, Bauer has currently 390 students. So even 21 students that Mrs. Woods referenced is about another classroom. But this is, so we just have to anticipate growth and try to get ahead of it. As we mentioned, we want to be proactive. We want to use the information that the city and township has shared with us to try to provide, again, the best quality education for our students in our elementary programming. Jane Chance has one new development. It's across from Austin Landing, and it's an apartment development that will have 47 units, and it is almost complete, so we could have new students in that attendance area as soon as August. And then our Bear is our smallest building right now with 174 students, but there is a 174-unit-proposed development called Patriot Place that could begin construction. So those are all impactful. So as we look at our current enrollments, where they are, you know, what can we do to be proactive? And unfortunately, one of the things that you can do to help equalize your enrollment area based on what you know is to redistrict. So we are starting to look at how some of our current enrollment boundaries could be modified to accommodate for some of that. Last night, we had a town hall meeting at Bauer. We had some great questions and feedback, but they kind of wanted to know, well, what does it look like K to 5 in terms of our enrollment? So I wanted to just share with you that, you know, this is our past three years of enrollment. Now, mind you, at the bottom, 2021 was our first year of COVID. So that year, we had kind of a modified programming where we did offer a PLP online program to over 1,000 of our students, and we did see a lower enrollment of kindergarten that year, and that is reflected there. So you can see, as we're looking at this year's enrollment, we have 312 kindergarteners and then 353 fifth graders and the range there. So, you know, that, you know, that looks nice and even on paper, but as you put them into buildings, the class sizes do vary. So that is something that obviously we're looking at and watching our trends to ensure that we can provide the best equitable opportunities for our students. So, you know, the challenges that we're seeing, I don't know if we can kind of go back, oh, these goals and challenges go together. So as we look at some of the challenges that these scenarios present, our goal, as we talk about next year, is how can we find an effective way to offer full and half-day kindergarten? Because again, full-day kindergarten is not funded by the state of Ohio, so we offer it on a tuition-based model, and we want to be able to provide that to any of our students, regardless of which enrollment area they live in, but also honor those parents who would like half-day. Because again, we, the state does not fund full-day completely, and we have to offer half-day as well. And then again, we mentioned our preschool. It's great that we have two preschool programs. And again, when we can collaborate and share ideas and also offer our students those interactions, it would be great to have some kind of preschool model where our teachers could be in close proximity to ensure we have the growth potential for those programs. Obviously, equalizing class size would go across the board. Obviously, preschool has some guidelines on their class sizes, and we do as well for K to 5, but to try to equalize those as best as possible with our resources that we currently have. we currently have. And then I think through COVID, we also saw, and probably even before that, the growing need for having enough resources for our students, counseling and social work services, nursing services. And our current programming, we share all those services between seven buildings. So there are some days when our nurse might not be at one elementary, and so everyone at the elementary that she's not serving or he's not serving, the building principal, the secretary, and other staff pitch in to help. And it would be great if we could equalize our resources and better utilize what we have to increase those support services, you know, equally across the board. And also, we have teachers that are continuing their education and are looking to further their education careers and possibly a counseling role, a principal role, or even a coaching, a curriculum coaching role. And by equalizing our attendance areas and equalizing class size, we may be able to offer those kind of opportunities for our staff. Of course, we want to retain as many of our quality educators as we can and also provide those kind of opportunities. So looking at different programming models could achieve that without adding staff, because we want to protect our district finances and resources, and some of the models that we've explored could allow us to achieve that goal. And then Title I funding is a federal funding source, and if our demographics are equalized, we could qualify for Title I funding in all of our elementaries. Currently, only five of those have that. So as we were looking at redistricting and trying to equalize size and offer the opportunity for space, we could also look at equalizing our enrollment and diversity and maybe possibly have seven Title I eligible schools, which would increase our funding. We currently receive over $1 million in Title I funds. And with those funds, it helps protect our general fund, which I know our soon-to-be treasurer will appreciate that we're doing that. But also, hopefully, our community understands that we want to maximize all of our dollars, whether it come from a federal grant or from the state or from our local tax revenue. So that's something that we're exploring as we're looking at how to equalize our district enrollment boundaries. And again, one of those goals is to develop plans for our growth that we definitely know is coming and is already here. So I just want to quickly talk about the three areas, the ideas that we're thinking of, and these are the things that we get into a lot more in-depth during our town hall meetings. And because each of our town halls is at one of our elementaries or the Maddox Primary Building. And so when you attend one of our town hall meetings, if you're able to, we talk about the idea and how it impacts all of our buildings, but depending on which town hall you attend, like last night, we were at Bauer, so we went over all of the proposed IDEA I components, but we really focus on what those changes could mean for that elementary or primary building we're in, and then as time allowed, we address other areas. This whole proposal is on our website. You just go to the main page, and you just click on the tab that says Programming Ideas, and you will be able to see the ideas, how it breaks down at each school. You will also be able to see the new developments, our current district map, any other data that we've been asked to share or share as part of, the why behind we would like to, why we would like to explore, the new elementary programming ideas, and some of the data we've collected this far into our journey. So IDEA I, just to give you a scenario, we would look at kind of that goal of trying to find a cohesive way to offer our kindergarten programs. And one of those would be to take one of our seven elementary buildings and make it a kindergarten building, a kindergarten village, a kindergarten center, where all of our kindergarteners would come to school in one building, so that we could maybe offer additional full-day programs and meet the need for students who do still want half-day and have equalized class sizes. And so one of those building proposals was Bear. The size of that building is compatible for only a one-grade-banded building, so that we could maximize the most number of classrooms and, again, create that efficiency that we're looking for and making sure that we're using the current resources we have in the most effective way. So as we did our feasibility, Bear has enough classrooms to meet the needs of our kindergarten program and also allow for growth if we see that with our new developments. We also have, within this model, if Bear is on the far west side of our district, if we saw quick growth and we needed to have maybe a two primary buildings or locations, we could look at kind of our southeast side and include Jane Chance as an option to have two kindergarten programming buildings, and that would still maximize our kindergarten students and staff instead of spreading them out over seven buildings. And one of our goals is to address our Maddox Lang and our Medler View preschool programs. And if we looked at Jane Chance as a campus, because Maddox Lang, if you're not familiar, and Jane Chance are on the same property, there's a sidewalk that connects them, and so they're about 100 to 150 yards apart from one another. So if we experienced growth and we needed to have two buildings, it would be at least a cohesive campus for now. And then because we would have our Bear building be fully programmed for kindergarten, we would have to do some redistricting of our Bear students who are in grades one through five to the other one-through-five buildings. So we would be looking at a complete redistrict to make sure that we put those students in the correct programming building and then shift our enrollments. Like I said, Bauer would definitely see some redistricting as soon as next year with this model, and then we would have to look at some other areas that we're taking in some of the Bauer, the Bear students to accommodate for them as well. So each of those, excuse me, slides for each building goes over that in detail, so I encourage you to look at those. We also looked at how we would try to maximize our class sizes. So in IDEA I, if we were only having one through five programming in six buildings and trying to equalize our class size, we still could have the potential where we might have to have first and second graders in the same room to keep those class sizes as low and manageable as possible, which we know isn't ideal, to have a teacher who's typically used to just teaching one grade level have to teach two grade levels, still meet all the standards and the requirements for those. So that would, that would definitely be, you know, not ideal in this proposal. And then as we look at, well, if we're changing what happens in one building and doing some redistricting, there could be the potential of 20 teachers that would have to move their classrooms in addition to the students that would be redistrict in this model. Just an idea for this, obviously, if kindergarten is all going to one building, we would need to look at a shuttle where our, we would want our families to be together and picking them up from home, but we would have to shuttle our kindergarten students from each of the the six, one-through-five buildings to the kindergarten, the village as well. So those are some things that we will have to allow for and look at staggered, staggered start time for those kindergarteners. But we have that allowance within their programming, because again, the state doesn't require full-day kindergarten. So if we needed to allow for a little travel time from some of the buildings to get there, we do have the flexibility to do that as well. So that's just a little bit of scenario one, or IDEA I that we have proposed. With this, with this scenario, it would check off some of our goals. So again, check all this out on the website as well. And then we'll jump down to Proposal II, just to give everyone a scenario and a little bit of the why and the ideas that we're trying to meet with IDEA II as well. And IDEA II is a little bit different than IDEA I. We would, there are some similarities, though. Obviously, we would still focus on trying to meet that goal of a effective programming model for kindergarten. So IDEA II also has us using Bear as a kindergarten village center building, trying to utilize a preschool campus at Jane Chance and Maddox Lang. But instead of six, one-through-five buildings, we would be looking at some grade banding to try to maximize our resources to the fullest extent and create the most space for future developments. So in this model, it is the most, I think, significantly different than what we're used to. It would be a grade banding model, so we would take three of our six buildings and have a focus of just grades one and two, and then the other three would be focused on programming of students of grades three, four, and five. And so we would take those six buildings and create sister schools or buddy schools or, you know, whatever concept where we would take two attendance boundaries and we would have those two boundaries have two elementary schools instead of one. So the sister schools that we have looked at in this proposal would be to take Bear and Mark Twain and sister those schools together so that Mark Twain could service all of the first and second graders within that new attendance boundaries after.
Bauer.
Bauer, sorry. I apologize for that. Bear, Bauer, I apologize. Excuse me, Mark Twain and Bauer, and we would sister school those two buildings. And so any students within the Mark Twain or Bauer attendance area would go to Mark Twain for first and second grade, and then all of those students would go to Bauer for third, fourth, and fifth grade. Another sister school in this idea, this proposal, is Kinder and Mound. So in that sister school scenario, all students in those two attendance areas would go to Mound for first and second grade and Kinder for third, fourth, and fifth grade. And then our last sister school would be Jane Chance and Medler View. And Jane Chance would, all students in those two attendance boundaries, Jane Chance would house the one and two, because again, it's going to have our preschool from Medler View, those four classrooms. And then if we did need a second kindergarten site, and then Medler View would house our third, fourth, and fifth graders. So that's just, you know, kind of those scenarios there. It again, would create, like I said, it's the biggest change right now in our elementary programming. So in that first year, we could see movement of 44 teachers. And again, students, we don't have that set number yet. Those slides about each school kind of talk about different neighborhoods or number of students that would need to be redistrict. With this model, you're going to have probably four at a minimum, in some cases, six grade level bands. So in some of the three, four, and five buildings, you could have five or six sections of fifth grade or fourth grade. So the need for split classrooms is probably very minimal. When we ran our numbers that we know right now today, we didn't see the need for any of those type of configurations. This is the most, it would provide the most efficiencies so that we would have the ability for teachers to pursue opportunities to be teacher leaders, teachers on assignments, counseling, things like that. It would definitely increase teacher collaboration and the ability to have professional learning communities. So those are just some things. And again, we would make sure that all of our families were picked up and taken to the required buildings and then shuttle our kindergarteners. So that's just a little snippet of IDEA II. And again, as you look on the website, all of the individual schools are listed and what those class sizes would be and also the number of teachers that would be needed. And then our third slide, our third idea that we're getting, seeking opportunities for input at our town hall meetings would be, again, looking at a K to five model that we currently have, but doing a redistricting. So in terms of trying to meet goals, we would, we feel like we could still have Maddox Lang and Jane Chance preschool on the same campus. We would have, in this idea, proposed IDEA, seven K to five buildings. We would have to start doing some redistricting, starting in the Bauer district, and then looking at where the new developments are. And those new developments may not end up being in the same school district that we, excuse me, attendance boundary that I showed you at the beginning. You know, Medler View wouldn't be able to retain both those developments. We would have to start moving possibly the Deer Park somewhere else, and we have those proposed on the individual slides. With this model, it's going to be hard to try to equalize our class sizes, because again, we're going to have buildings that have 390 students versus 174, and we're still going to experience those enrollment bubbles and discrepancies. So in order to at least meet one of our goals of equalizing class size, we do see that there could be 10 split classrooms next year. Right now, we currently have one split classroom. It's a one-two split, and that is at Kinder Elementary. And in this scenario, and you would see that in the slides for each school, we would have, almost every building would have like a one-two split or even a three-four split. And again, that's, that's difficult, but it would equalize class sizes. And then, of course, the biggest factor with this model is we still wouldn't be able to solve that kindergarten programming puzzle. And so as we worked through the summer, we would be trying to figure out the best way to service all of our students and have various kindergarten programs in various buildings and still have students that are leaving their attendance boundaries to meet their programming needs like we do currently. So that's just kind of some overview of our ideas. The town halls, we are seeking everyone's input as we go over this, and especially when we go to each building, you know, kind of hearing from our student, our parents and our staff at those buildings. We're going to take this on the road for seven more trips. We're going to gather all the data. We're going to look at all of the input, and I mean, even since last night, it's like, oh, yeah, we've got to think about that a little bit more, or that's something we haven't thought about yet, and start gathering that data to answer those questions and figure out that piece of the puzzle. You know, a big question last night was, what's your timeline? Excuse me. And, you know, we're going to try to have a decision made about what direction we want to go by March, the first of March. Kindergarten registration and preschool registration always take place at that time, and, you know, everyone wants to know, and we know how exciting parents are about their students starting preschool or kindergarten for the first time, and we want to be able to have, you know, some concrete information and make the best decision for all of our students. So we will be taking in this information. We've had some work sessions in November and December and January. We need to update that a little bit, and those are open to the public. So we do anticipate having a late February work session where we will kind of talk about all of the things. Our board members attend all of the work sessions as well. Two of them attend each one, hopefully, with their schedules in the next couple of weeks. And we'll be looking at all of that and taking that into consideration. Like I said, we have talked a little bit about transportation and how we would make sure that we would adjust that to meet our families' needs. We are also having a discussion with the YMCA, and currently, we do offer before and after-school programming to meet some of our parents' needs. We have already started having discussions about further opportunities to provide additional childcare, maybe even for our preschool students and our half-day students. So we definitely are excited with the possibilities of not only our school looking at different ways, but our community partners helping us as well to solve the puzzles, to make it the best partnership and program we can for our students moving forward. So that's quickly in a nutshell. And again, we want to encourage everyone to visit our website for updated information. Our next town hall is Monday, and that is at Bear Elementary School. All of our town halls start at 6:00, and we will share our slide deck that is on our website and talk through that. And we, last night, we took questions as we went and sought input, and so we're looking forward to hearing from all of our residential areas for the upcoming year. So, thank you.
Okay. Just to make it clear, the board sessions, all board members will be there for that, and that's for the benefit of people that will be watching it. And for the town halls, there will only be two board members because by law, there's some little intricacies there that we want to make sure that we are doing things correctly. But with only the two board members being at the town halls, please feel free to call any of us. It's not just the two that attend your town hall. Email us, and we will do our best to answer any of your questions, and anything that you bring to us, we usually take the Dr. Blessing, so please feel free to do that.
Dale, you were speaking of the work session, right? We'll all be there, and that is also open to the public.
Yeah.
I think there's been some confusion on that, so that is open to the public.
Yep.
And those take place at our central office building, the memorial building. Yes, and they are advertised on our website as well, and we will have those on our town hall programming page, I mean, our elementary programming page.
hall programming page, I mean, our elementary programming page. So yes.
Yeah. And I would encourage people to look at our website and everything, because there's a lot of questions that are answered on the website. And that would kind of be a blessing, since I've been getting fifty million emails and phone calls here recently. But that's okay. That's why I do this. Moving on.
So can we have a motion to approve items A through J?
I move that we approve items A alpha through I India, or actually J through A through J. Juliet.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Okay. That item is passed. Next, we'll move on to the approval of adoption and revision of board policy. It's recommended that the Board of Education waive the first reading of the following board policy, the one for graduation requirements, and that's file IKF. Part B is approval and adoption revision of the board policy that we just mentioned. And can I have a, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the adoption revision of board policies in items A and B. And could I have a motion for approval?
I'll move for the approval of adoption revision of board policies A and B.
I second it.
Headed first by Mr. Lewis, second by Mrs. Neese, Mrs. Stacy Moore.
Sure. So the graduation requirement board policy you're updating, the number of our credits to graduate is not changing. We are still sitting at twenty-two credits required to graduate. What is changing is currently for our students, they are required to receive instruction in financial literacy. But starting with our current freshman class, the class of 2026 and beyond, they are required to have, earn a half credit in financial literacy now. So that's one addition into our credit requirements to graduate. Also, for those five and a half electives, we used to have a restriction in there for a half credit of a technology and a half credit of family and consumer science. Going through scheduling committee meetings and going through input from staff and students and looking at our priorities, we want to be able to offer a little more student choice in what they're taking as electives, and what, so they're able to align to their future goals a little bit more. So there's still the same amount of credits, but reducing that restriction, especially with the technology, our students that have STEM kindergarten through fifth grade, they have a computer class in sixth grade, they have a technology class in eighth grade. So we're giving them the option to continue technology at the high school. And then the family and consumer science, most of the students are still going to get a family and consumer science credit from the financial literacy. And we're still going to follow our process of most freshmen going to Viking Prep as ninth graders. But that also helps with a little flexibility for us. So the number's still there. We're just adding that half credit required for financial literacy and adding a little more flexibility in our elective choices.
Okay. Thank you. And I think you mentioned that our standards are a little bit higher than the state standards.
Yes. The state has twenty credits to graduate. We have twenty-two.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay. That has been approved. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are items A through F that I will go through here. A, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following overnight extended student trips. Mr. Jared Levin, teacher at the high school, APES and AP Biology to Ohio State Stone Lab on South Bass Island on Lake Erie. That would be September thirteenth, fourteenth of 2023. Item B, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve out-of-state travel for Mrs. Amy Elsass, Constitution Center Fellowship. That's in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and that would be on January twentieth of 2023. Amy Elsass for the TAH multi-day seminar, Springfield, Illinois, April twenty-first, 2023. And Mr. Jared Levin, APS and AP Biology, Ohio State Stone Lab, South Bass Island, 2023. Item C, it is recommended by the superintendent and high school principal that the Board of Education approve Ellie Smith for tuition-free enrollment for her senior year. This permission is only granted to a twelfth-grade student who previously attended Myersburg High School as a resident pupil during their eleventh-grade year. Item D, Michael Black, principal of Myersburg High School, is recommended that Zoe Byrum, Christian Davis, Jackson McGowan, Quincy Shavers, Jacob Williams for early graduation pending satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. Item E, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve Myersburg High School's program of studies and fee structure for the 2023-2024 school year. Item F, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent items A through E. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of items, consent items, A through E.
Second.
Approval by Mr. Daffler, a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? You, Mrs. Moore?
I will talk. I just want to reiterate the overnight out-of-state trips. Mr. Levin's trip is when he takes his students every year to the Stone Lab, and it is an amazing trip for our students. The two trips for Amy Elsass, she receives grants and fellowships from both those organizations to do those trips. She continues to, she's like me, she just can't stop learning. So that is no cost to the district for her to attend those. The program of studies I was able to share, and it's also on our website, with some changes. I'll just highlight a few. I already spoke on the graduation requirements. We were chosen as a district after we applied to pilot the AP African-American Studies class, Advanced Placement African-American Studies class. We are required then to offer it for three years. Rachel O'Connor will complete the summer institute and teach that class next year. We are expanding our CTC satellite programs. Next year, we added the Intro to Engineering and the Robotics next year, this year, and it was a huge hit. The teacher is wonderful and is amazing. We had more student interest than we can fit in the class. We're going to offer a third-level class for that program. And then we're also bringing agriculture and natural resources back to our district through a satellite program with two courses next year. The CTC has posted, or will post that position to be staffed through them. And then Production Process One and Two is something that's new and exciting. If anybody has visited Tim Frees or Duane Hensley's class, or ordered Christmas ornaments from our new CNC machine, Tim Frees and Duane Hensley are going to co-teach a class next year that is completely about production from beginning to end, and kind of run it like a business. The financial literacy will be added. And then Algebra One, Part A, we're kind of doing a whole loop from where I started, our general level algebra class. We're going to divide into two years to allow for some more conceptual understanding of our algebra standards and more intervention time and personalized learning. So our students will take two years to complete algebra. They'll still get a full credit each year, so they'll still be able to earn their four math credits. But we're just expanding the curriculum over two years for the general level. College prep level and honors will stay a full year.
And then items C and D for our seniors, our approval of the tuition-free is board policy recommendation, and then also our early grads from Mr. Black. So.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, it's just very impressive. When you look at that course of study, it makes me want to be back in high school again. Yeah.
Not me. It is impressive. I don't want to go back.
Mr. Zakovich, I'd like to thank you for coordinating and helping with the classes and everything from the CTC. I know that sometimes you put in a lot of, not sometimes, all the time, you put in a lot of time out there for us, and we appreciate that.
Well, I just want to thank you folks for the great collaboration that we've got. It's been exciting with the initial satellite work we've done. And I think the additional satellite is going to be awesome, and a lot of people will benefit from it. So thank you.
And new Mr. Treasurer, a lot of this is being paid for by the CTC. So take a deep Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes. Okay, next we'll move on to Human Resources Agenda Items. These will be items A through E. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. What I'm about to read is good for item A and B. Employment in the Myersburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and an FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. It is recommended by the Board of, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the reports filed for January nineteenth for the certificated and classified, and the supplemental stipends. Item C, it is recommended, it's recommended by the Board of Education that Mr. Justin Blevins be awarded an administrative contract as the treasurer CFO of the Myersburg City School District effective February first of 2023 through July thirty-first of 2025, with all terms and benefits as contained in his employment contract. Item D, it is recommended that the Board of Education that John Epsy be hired as interim treasurer for Myersburg City School effective January twentieth of 2023, with all terms and benefits as contained in his employment contract. Item E, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve resource items A through D. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of Human Resources Items A alpha through D delta.
I second it.
First from Mr. Amsler, a second from Mrs. Neese. Would you like to come up front for a minute and shake some people's hands, Mr. Blevins? And you, your lovely bride can come too, if she'd like.
Welcome aboard, Justin.
Well, let's make him official by voting on it first, and then it'll be official. So.
Yeah.
So there's no confusion. Wouldn't you want to speak to John being an interim?
Yes. So how this works, state of Ohio always have to have some treasurer on record. And so today's John's last day. And so starting tomorrow at midnight tonight, he becomes the interim treasurer. He's still on, doing our books and all that until Justin comes on on February first.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say that, Justin, you're so welcome to come aboard. You seem like a very fine, I'll call you a young man since I'm an old man. And I was just very, very happy with your, just everything about you, you know, that we've seen so far. And you're an educational family. Your wife is also a teacher at Springboro, right? So if you ever want to move, I'm sure we might have a place for you. But I'm a recruiter. But thank you, Justin, for applying. And I know you're, hopefully we'll have you for many good years. Okay. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
It's official. You're backing out now. We got you.
Okay. Move to agreements and contracts. Pay close attention to these, okay? It is recommended by the superintendent and treasurer CFO to enter into an agreement with Strategic Management Solutions for Category One E-Rate Funding and Category Two Components and Services for the year of 2023, 2024, 2025, at the federal E-Rate Program as presented. Item B, the superintendent and treasurer CFO recommend approval of the attached agreement with IM Boundless Incorporated as presented. Item C, it is recommended by the superintendent and director of Secondary Curriculum to enter into an agreement with Sinclair Community College as presented. Excuse me. Item D, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve an agreement between the Myersburg City School District and the Children's Home of Cincinnati, DBA, Best Point Education, and Behavioral Health as presented. Item E, the superintendent and treasurer CFO recommend that the Board of Education approve an agreement between Montgomery County Educational Service Center and the Myersburg City Schools as presented. Item F, the superintendent, treasurer, and CFO recommend approval of the attached agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center for the student services at the Warren County Educational Service Center Wellness Center as presented. Item G, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve agreements and contracts items A through F. Do I have a motion, please?
I move to approve that the Board of Education approve agreements and contract items A through F.
Second.
Headed first by Mrs. Neese, a second by Mr. Daffler.
Several of them are mine, so I'll pop through and tell them, and then anybody else can pop in on the other ones. So the IM Boundless Contract, the Agreement with Children's Home of Cincinnati, and then the F, the Wellness Center, are all placements that are a variety of students who have moved in the district, or and were already placed in those situations, or have moved in the district and were placed in those specialized placements in their previous districts. So we needed to find a complement, you know, the same type of placement for them. So that's what those are. Then the one that is the Future Self Program with the Montgomery County ESC, that is actually an alternative to suspension and/or expulsion for seventh and eighth graders. So it is a program that we can utilize if we have a student who has disciplinary actions have risen to that level. We can potentially have them there for at least thirty days, if not longer, in order to try to redirect them and get them some support. It does focus on that idea of future self, and helping students to get that plan of where they intend to be as young adults, and hopefully get them on the right track. So it is a mixture of social-emotional learning curriculum, as well as their academic curriculum while they're there. Again, that would just be utilized in the, in, you know, some of your more serious, you know, we're going down the road of several suspensions, or potentially someone's recommending a seventh or eighth grader for expulsion.
Okay. Mrs. Moore, do you want to speak to the Sinclair?
I'm happy to. This will be our ninth year with College Credit Plus next school year. We partnered with Sinclair every year. We offer College Credit Plus courses at Myersburg High School, taught by Myersburg High School teachers. We have students that go to Sinclair. We have students that take online classes with Sinclair. So this is our contract with Sinclair for the College Credit Plus for the 2023-2024 school year, and their tuition rate.
school year and their tuition rate. We currently, this school year, have 211 students enrolled in at least one course at Sinclair earning 2,036 credit hours. That's this year. We did have our College Credit Plus night last week, so last week, yeah, and we probably had, I forget how many we counted now, we had probably over 125 families represented. We're excited to continue this program.
Thank you. Dr. Blessing, how about approval of agreement with Strategic Management Solutions?
Sure, we receive funds from the federal government for our use of, like, a lot of technical items such as phone service, internet provider, sometimes equipment, sometimes, you know, servers or Wi-Fi service. So a lot of schools partner with a strategic management solution to file all those claims to, for us to receive reimbursement for those items that we provide for our students and our staff to have all of those technological services. And we receive a discount and a lot of times we receive a portion of our, our bill or the services or even equipment we'll get reimbursed for. And so Strategic Management Solutions helps us through that process.
Thank you, three. Any questions?
Yeah, hey Stacy, do you know, I know we've had students in the past that get their associate's degree at the same time. Do you know if we have any this year as well?
I'm not, I'm not sure about any this year. I haven't been notified of any completing this year. We do have a couple students who have already completed probably two full years of college and so going into college, they will go in with two years under their belt. But as far as associate's degree this year, Sinclair has not notified us of any yet.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay, that is passed. Move on to the financial, financial agenda, items A through C. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. If anybody, by the way, those reports are public. If anybody would like to see them, they are available. Item B. It's recommended by the Superintendent, Treasurer and CFO, approval to make the purchase as presented. And item C is as recommended, Board of Education approves the financial agenda items A and B. Do I have a motion, please?
I move for the approval of financial agenda items A and B.
Second.
I second it.
Okay, first from Mr. Lewis, second from Mrs. Neese. Our Treasurer is obviously not here this evening. If anybody has any questions about any of those reports, please feel free to contact him tomorrow.
Mr. Toadvine, I can comment on the purchase.
Okay.
The technology department, we have a regular rotation of our buildings and when our computers are updated and Bauer is on our rotation this year for an update and this purchase is to purchase the teacher computers and student computers that'll be upgraded and the plan is to do it over spring break instead of the summer.
Awesome, thank you. Good to know. Roll call.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Next, move on to acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's zero-one-eight account unless indicated otherwise. $116.25 from an anonymous donor to the Myersburg City Schools for student lunch charge fees. $500 from an anonymous former HV Bear student to HV Bear Elementary School for student lunch charge fees. $20 from anonymous donor to Bear Elementary School for student lunch charge fees. $2,500 from the estate of former student Jerome E. Hile to Myersburg High School. $5,000 from Journey Community Church to Kinder Elementary School for student lunch charge fees. Do I have a motion?
I move for the acceptance of donations.
Second. Okay, first from Mr. Daffler, second from Mr. Amsler. Obviously, the Board and the district always thank people in businesses for the donations that we can use for our students. It's wonderful to have people out there that, that care as much as the people in Myersburg do, so it's fabulous and I'd like to thank them. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes. Okay, next we'll move on to reports. The first report is from Mr. Joe Izakovich from the MVCTC.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening as well.
First off, I just want to thank the Board for my reappointment to MVCTC. I think I'm up around 16 years now representing Miami'sburg and it is truly a labor of love and I've been reappointed as President of the Board out there, so I will be continuing my reporting as usual. As far as our growth at MVCTC, the class of 2025, our juniors, we have 1,211 applications so far. It's growing. At this time last year, we had 1,110, so we're over 100 ahead of last year, which is a good thing. One point I wanted to make, we have work-based learning at MVCTC where we do the internships and it's very successful linking up internships, pre-apprenticeships, and advanced placement for work and we have 165 seniors participating now in this work-based learning program and the average wage for interns pre-apprenticeship is 1379 per hour. And since the beginning of the 2022-2023 school year, our students have earned over $412,000 and worked 20, almost 30,000 hours, so we have a successful intern program. Our program highlighted this month is Electrical Trades. From Miami'sburg, we have Cameron Holland, who is interning at Reliable Electric, and William Johnson from Miami'sburg at Three Wire Electric. Another point I wanted to make too about the success of our programs, we have a very strong relationship with Caterpillar Corporation and those of you that were able to attend our tour saw the CAT simulators that our, our students utilize in conjunction with CAT. And CAT, for the first time this year, had a competition based on the CAT simulators. They had students from all over the United States participating and one of our students, Jordan Troutwine from Ansonia, scored tops in the dozer, dozer category for the CAT simulator. So I think that shows the success of our programs and our, our relationships with some of the companies that we deal with. Also, on November 8th, 2022, our students from Animal Care and Management traveled to Ohio State Fairgrounds to compete in the Aquarium Management Competition. The Aquarium Management CDE is designed to evaluate students' knowledge of fishkeeping trends and practical application of skills in the aquarium industry. And Jenna Samples from Miami'sburg was part of that group and in the competition, out of 13 teams, total teams, Jenna scored 54th. Also, congratulations to the winner of our Business Ownership Program 2022 Shirt Design Contest and that was Ethan Lunicky from Miami'sburg. Other than that, as we all know, we had a very, very difficult time with below-zero temperatures. We did not go untouched. We had a pipe burst in the ad building, got to it quickly. Unfortunately, in the new construction, we had a major break, many thousands of gallons of water cascading through. It affected some of our classrooms and our libraries, so we're in the midst of dealing with insurance, but one bright spot, it happened close to one of our elevators and the elevator pit has a sump and that did a nice job of preventing it from going further, but, so we're dealing with that at this point, but we will be ready for classes as usual, so thank you. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll go to, move to the report from our Legislative Liaison, Mr. Corey Daffler.
Governor Wine got sworn in for a second term last week. In Ohio, you can only have two four-year terms. I think that would be good for probably all governing bodies, in my opinion, especially the Senate and House and all them career politicians. Some of the, one of the bills Dewine signed was House Bill 458. The bill eliminates the August special election except in the instance when the August special election is to nominate or elect candidates for the U.S. House of Representatives or a school district is under a fiscal emergency. The bill also allows a school district who enters territory, is located, entire territory is located within the representative, sorry, congressional district that is on an August ballot to put certain levies on the August ballot. The bill also makes changes to election laws including voter identification, absentee voting, in-person voting, and drop boxes. Not too much activity in the House, but the Senate had some activity, over 21 bills this week. One bill introduced was Senate Bill 1, which was previously Senate Bill 178, trying to take all the power from the Board of Elections, the State Board of Elections, and renaming it to the Board of Work, Workers, Workforce and the governor having all control over that. Once again, that's a, you know, one, one power fits all, which is usually not a good thing. A couple other Senate bills for education. Senate Bill 11, to enact the Parent Education Freedom Act to expand eligibility for education choice scholarship, to seize the opportunity of the pilot program scholarship program on July 1st, 2023, and increase the income tax credit for household expenses. Senate Bill 14, Teachers Without License, to expand eligibility, eligibility for veterans of the U.S. Armed Forces to be employed as teachers without license. And Senate Bill 17, School Curriculum, to incorporate free market capitalism content into the high school financial literacy and internship standards and model curriculum. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm a little congested this evening, so I apologize.
Report from Student Achievement Liaison, Mr. Christopher Amsler, please.
Go along with our Students of the Month, other building Student of the Month representatives include from Bauer Elementary School, Keegan Bush, Bear Elementary School, Finn Schultz, Jane Chance Elementary School, Destiny Gutierrez Acosta, Mark Twain Elementary School, Kalen Meredith, Medlarview Elementary School, Preston Evans, Mound Elementary School, Claire Welsh, Miami'sburg Middle School, Mackenzie Sims, and from Miami'sburg High School, Jana Azam. So congratulations to all of our Students of the Month and our district's Student of the Month as well.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll move on to the Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition Liaison, Ms. Anne Neese.
We did not have a coalition meeting today. It was canceled for some reason, but I did have some information from the Dayton Daily News. You may have read this a couple weeks ago. The year 2022, we ended up with 307 fatal overdoses, but on December 35th, 31 and January 1st, there were 11, there was a surge of overdoses. There were 11 fatal overdoses in those two days, which if that kept going at that pace, we would, we would be up to 2,000 overdoses by the end of the year, so hopefully it won't. Overdoses are still the leading cause of death in ages 50 and younger. Fentanyl continues to be in our drug supply and access to Narcon, which reverses the overdoses, continues to be a problem. If you need these phone numbers, Amber at Central Office, 937-866-3381. Don Schwartz, if you could call her, Amber has these numbers to obtain NALO boxes for your businesses and that's where there's Narcon in the box that will reverse the effects of the overdose. And also there's a number for Warm Line Help for families of addicts and then also there's a number for Montgomery County Alcohol Drug and Mental Health Services Hotline. So if anybody in the community is in need of any of that kind of help, Amber at Central Office has all those numbers.
Right, thank you, Mrs. Neese. Next, we'll move to the district news. Myersburg Middle School Team 13, along with staff members Michelle Lieber, Melissa Wells, and Nicole Dunn, sang Christmas carols at both Catering Health Miami'sburg and Sycamore Glen Retirement Centers prior to Christmas break. They also periodically visited, they periodically visit St. James Preschool to do activities with the students. Mrs. Lauren Lukowski, Lukowski, I'm sorry, shared that the high school theater class wrote, staged, and performed 20-minute plays as their final exam. These students stepped out of their comfort zones, showed their creativity, and had a lot of fun, she said. The middle school and high school choirs will be participating in two Broadway workshops this semester. A professional Broadway performer from a touring show will work with our students on vocal technique and performing skills. Students will have the opportunity to ask questions about their career and how to pursue it. They will also perform for students. The first performance is Thursday, January 26th. A performer from Les Misérables will be there. The next is at the beginning of May and the performer from Disney's Frozen and Musical will be there. The Transportation Department has begun an eight-week wellness initiative based on the old show, The Biggest Loser. The registration fee is $10. Prizes will be awarded based upon participation. Next, Mound Elementary School Teacher, Mrs. Christensen, recently started a very engaging and fun STEM activity with our fifth graders. The students are working in cooperative groups to solve a mystery. They're given some background information on the case as well as some evidence materials to determine which suspect may be involved. Working together to solve problems, the students have to enter the correct answer before being able to move on to the next step of the process. It is impressive to see. It is impressive to see how actively engaged and excited the students are in handling pieces of evidence and clues to solve the case. Next, we'll move on to comments. Board of Education Staff Comments. That's around the table. We'll start at the end down there with Mr. Dapler.
I will start with congratulating Justin again. Looking forward to working with you. Seemed very passionate and driven, and I'm excited. I want to say thank you to Mrs. Fikes for all the hard work on the grants and the STEM programs. That, that stuff is awesome, and grants are great. Free money is awesome. I bet Jordan ends up with a nice living if he is top caterpillar.
Yes.
You know, he'll probably be doing well in a few years.
I would agree.
Moving dirt for the highways or something, I'm sure. And then, I just want to encourage citizens to come to the town halls. A lot of times, people are busy, and they don't want to take the time to listen, and then things change, and they wonder why. So I would just encourage you to come and voice opinions and listen to what we have to say. That's all I got.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, tell Justin welcome. I know that, you know, you made me teary-eyed during the interview, and I saw what Corey wrote on his interview sheet, and of course, we can't disclose that because it was executive session, but we feel blessed. Also, we're going to dearly miss John Espy. He did a fantastic job, and I wish him well in his hometown district. That's why he made the switch. I want to thank Chris for his presidency last year. You know, I always appreciate the advice that he has. Thank you. I do want to tell a little story. If you guys aren't too anxious to go, I just, I just want to, I just want to thank the high school staff, the custodians, the aides, the teachers, the principals, the cafeteria Every five years, our district develops a new strategic plan. Less than two years ago, we started our new one, correct? And one of our focus areas that, you know, we collaborated on was safety and a sense of belonging. Well, I have this little guy I've been working with for like, almost five years now, and he is a child that, for various reasons, could easily just take school out of his world. And Wednesday, when I met with him, I said to him, I said, "Do you feel like you," no, I said, "I actually said, 'Do you have a sense of belonging here? Do you feel like you belong here at the high school?'" And without any hesitation, he said yes. And, you know, that just, I just loved it. I just think it's a great story. And, you know, he, he, he could take school out of his world, and, and he's feeling really engaged, and I want to thank everyone at the high school for doing that. It's a blessing.
Yep. Thank you for saying that.
Again, I'd just like to say thank you, Anne, for everything that you did for me. You were compassionate, warm, always have the kids' best interest at heart when I would ask a question or your opinion. And you attended meetings that I definitely can't attend with my schedule, and so, thank you for everything that you did. John is, is, I won't say was, because he is, but he is great for our district. I never ran into anybody in our district that didn't have anything nice to say about him. And I wish him the best of his hometown district that he's going to. But thankfully, Justin, you had an outstanding interview. I couldn't be more happy for you and your family and the opportunity that you're going to get here, and I think you're going to fit in very nicely for a number, number of years here. Please, okay? So, and lastly, as I give thanks, our, our district is expanding. It has been expanding. I work for the fire department as much as you know, so I know what's being constructed, as well as Dale is a realtor. I know how ripped at the seams we are at Bauer School. So the boundary lines that we are going to have to change to balance students out. I know there has been a lot of hard work, Amy, and I know I'm leaving a ton of people out, so I apologize. But I know you and Steve and Dr. Blessing and a number of other people, Katie, have worked, I can't even count the hours that you guys have worked on. I know you've, I just want to say that how much I appreciate everything that you guys have done. And we have thrown different ideas at you. You've accepted them without judgment, and I know we're going to get some more, and I want to get some more ideas, because it's a big change. But we have to get it right, and if we don't get it right... We will get it right, however, it's, a lot of decisions have to be made within the next thirty to forty-five days, so. But I wanted to thank you all for all your hard work. So, and I, just like Corey said, I want people to attend the town halls, because that's, that's where the questions have got to come risen. So, our decision is going to be hard, probably the second hardest decision that I've ever made here, with the exception of the one decision that I wish I would have had back. So, with that being said, I will go to Mr. Lewis.
What? I want to start out with thanking Gail for your presentation. That was really awesome. I retired from Miamisburg, and I was hired at Tri-County North to teach Biology and Anatomy. And so I went there and was getting ready to get everything together, and the principal came in to tell me, "Hey, we had two openings. One was Biology and Anatomy, the other one was STEM. We've never had STEM before, we want to start it." The person that we hired to teach STEM backed out. So we want you to teach STEM. It'd be easier for us to find a Biology and Anatomy teacher. He knew nothing. I spent two summers at Wright Patterson's Gaming Lab. It's right off the base there. I had a ball. But going from the traditional teaching into a STEM classroom was very challenging. I got in trouble a lot because my classroom sounded like a gym, because of all the collaboration and up and down, you know? But I, I'm really, really glad I did that. I had as much fun as the kids did, and I'm sure you enjoy it, but a lot of neat things going on in that classroom, so, thank you. Chris stole what I was going to say next, but I'll say it anyway. Laura, Steve, Amy, Katie, and the whole team that's working on elementary programming, the amount of hours and sleepless nights I know that you've had, it is appreciated. And as Chris said, we will get this right, and I know it's a huge undertaking, so, thank you. And Justin?
Need to get your size, because we like it just blue and white.
And not the Springburg.
Yeah, that's right.
The Viking blue and white, so.
The enemy, by the way. Geewalk enemy. You finished, sir? Okay. For those of you who don't know, I think that it's pretty well-known, but, but Mr. Espy's leaving because he's going back to his hometown, his children attend school there, his home is there, his wife is a principal there, and I just wish him all the luck. I called him a traitor, just because he, he fit in here just, just perfect. And Justin, I know that you will also, and I just want you to know that John has a great work ethic, and his expertise is beyond measure, and so you have some pretty big shoes to fit into. I think John had about a size eighteen, so I think you get what I'm saying. But we're going to, we really appreciate you already. I think you're going to fit in perfectly. Town halls, real quick. Any information that anybody wants to send to anybody sitting up here is way. Amy, she's a workhorse, been tirelessly doing things. These guys, well, we've all been participating, but they have put in the, the hours that I think would none without even sleep, because I know that, I can speak for even Mr. Lewis, and we've talked about the churn in stomachs that we've had with trying to, you know, fit all this stuff in and do it right. But anyway, we are open, open to opinions, ideas from anybody in the public, period, okay? So please, please do that. Whatever somebody may bring to us may make a big difference in something that, for a child, you know? And we're, I might want to elaborate anymore, but the time spent with transportation too, you didn't mention a whole lot about that, but transportation's been worked on a lot, many, many hours on how to work all that stuff out. So what I'm trying to say is thank you, thank you, and thank you, okay? We really appreciate it. Mentoring, what Anne mentioned, she, she didn't use the word mentoring, but that's what she did with her student that she was talking about at the high school. If anybody would like to, anybody listening on the camera there, you could contact my daughter, for one. She's at the Kinder School. Her name's Mrs. Pelfrey now, not Toadvine, but she would help anybody to find someone to mentor at any age level. Thank you, Ms. Fikes, for your, what you put out there for STEM, and I'm going to shut up. It took way longer than I did tonight, so watch it, big boy.
Well, kudos. I, I feel the same. Ditto for what everyone has said. Also, I want to thank our board. It is National School Board Recognition Month, and as I stated earlier, we do appreciate the service that you provide our district and the support you have for, for all of us and our students. So we truly appreciate that from, from the administrative team and all of our teachers and staff. So thank you. And also to Joe for his service at the NBC TC and everything that you bring here as part of the board as well. So thank you. And thank you to Mark Twain this month for your presentation. And just so the board knows, that Mark Twain does these really great PBIS clubs, and they are always wonderful and gracious and invite us, and so Amy and I know we like to get over there and spend Friday afternoon with the various PBIS clubs, and it's just a great program, and we love to see all the different things that the students are doing, and you're the PTO and the staff put together, so we do enjoy that. So thank you for continuing to abide us to that, so. And welcome, Justin. We're excited to have you on the team. We appreciate all that, that John Espy has done for our district as well. So bittersweet, excited to have a new team member, but sad to see John go, and I just looking forward to the next seven town halls. I like to run marathons, and it's going to be a marathon couple weeks, but, you know, we're going to gain some great insight, and it's hard for one person, one team, to sit and look at things from every perspective and make sure that we're getting it right, as some of you said. So we're looking forward to hearing from a lot of folks and getting their input, so thank you.
All right, so I'm just going to say ditto, 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 so we can get out of here tonight. But Justin, and for the puppeto, you know, we want to welcome you, and John, John is going to be working with Justin through the transition as we go through, so I wanted to share that as well, that we're going to have a lot of collaboration moving through, so it'll be a seamless transition in terms of that, so congratulations.
Okay. Right at the table. Okay, next, we'll move on to public comments. Each person addressing the board shall give his or her name and address. Each person is allotted three minutes to speak until the time of thirty minutes is used. We will give a thirty-second warning so speakers know when their three minutes are up. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consistent with our policy, this is not a time to question individual board members or district employees. As a reminder, our expectation tonight is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. We will not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, and harassing statements. We do have one green sheet. Mr. Scott Taylor.
Good evening again, and I really enjoy coming here, because I'm learning so much more about the school district that I really love, and my, my children have benefited so much from. But I wanted to tell you, I want to let you know that in previous presentations, I told you about the approaching darkness we seem to be having in our country about, so you can better defend our students against these things. And in September, I provided you the book, The Bodies of Others, by Naomi Wolf, which really talked about, about what happened during the COVID-19 pandemic in October. It was about Title IX revisions, LGBTQ things, and I gave you the book Irreversible Damage by Abigail Shire. Then in December, I shared the truth about the pharmaceutical industry in regard to the COVID-19, and provided you the copy of the book, The Real Anthony Fauci by Robert Kennedy. And this month's topic I wanted to bring to your attention is American Marxism, which includes all three of these topics that Mark Levin wrote. I finished this book, and I found it a very important book in my library. Levin explains the book American Marxism, how the core elements of Marxist ideology are now pervasive in American society and culture from our schools, the press, corporations, Hollywood, the Democratic Party, and the Biden presidency, and how it often is cloaked in deceptive labels such as progressivism, democratic socialism, social activism, and community activism. The counter-revolution, the American revolution, is now in full force, and it can be no longer dismissed or ignored for devouring our society, culture swirling around our everyday lives, the ubiquitous of our political schools, media, and entertainment. And now, it's interesting that this Marxist ideology appears to, actually appeared in our sister school to our south, Springboro, by teaching elements of CRT. Rebecca Smith Shepherd's posted on the Springboro Discussion Group on Facebook a picture of a seventh-grade language arts book reported to be present at the Springboro Middle School that states, and I actually got a copy to connect with the parent that found this. This is an article that says, "Women in Aviation: History Writing by Patricia and Frederick Mackenzie." And that sounds like a really exciting topic. And the instructions say, "As you read, pay attention to details that describe what had, like to be a woman to become a pilot during the early nineteen hundreds. What obstacles did each pilot face? Write down any questions you have while reading." That sounds like a really exciting topic to celebrate women in aviation. This is how the article starts out. It says, "American aviation..." Thirty seconds?
Yes.
"...American aviation, from its very beginning, is marred with sexist and racist assumptions." That sounds like a great opening, doesn't it? It was, it was taken from granted that women were generally inferior to men, and that white men were superior to all others. Flying was said... Flying was said to require a level of skill and courage that women and blacks lacked. Yet despite these prevailing prejudices, the dream..." But my point is, do we want that kind of material in our schools? And I hope that these particular authors are not present. I just wanted to share that with you, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Next, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second. First, from Mr. Daffler, second from Mr. Lewis. Any objections?
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
We are now adjourned. 7:50.